We are now officially back into open session. And for the balance of the meeting, I'd like to start by turning it over to Chancellor Folt for some remarks relative to our presentation. Chancellor?
Thank you. Now my phone starts ringing. Isn't that classic? I'm going to turn that off. This is a problem when you wear your technology on your wrist. Good, okay, thank you. So I'm going to take a few minutes to present a summary of the plan that we're going to be offering to the Board of Governors. We need to do a vote in the public session on this. So these are our ideas, and we're going to talk about that for the disposition and preservation of the Confederate monument. I want to say again how grateful we are to the Board of Governors for having this opportunity. This was extremely important to us and the Board of Trustees, the senior team. So many people across campus work very hard in a compressed timeframe to get this right. And I think we feel like we're looking forward to sharing this with you. There is, I want you to know, there will be a report that is public, that has all the details about everything that we're discussing here. So there'll be much more specific information available once that has taken place. What I'm going to do is go fairly briefly through the resolutions from the Board of Governors that we were addressed. That was our charge. I'm also going to talk about the Board of Trustees' resolutions on our historical contextualization, because it dovetails very, very closely with our plan. And in fact, we think that's very important, how these things work together. I'll cover our process, the kind of information we were gathering, and the inputs, where we got that. And then I'll cover at the end our charge in what will be our response in the plan that we present. Now, there are so many people that we could thank, because so many people participated in this process. And these are just some of the official logos, including the faculty, the students, the employee forum, the graduate and professional students, members of the system, and the Alumni Association. In addition, so many people from our local communities and across the state. And I think that has really enriched our process and really had an influence on how all of us have been thinking. So we're here after much that has been taking place on the campus regarding the statue, but so much more. And I think it's important that, again, this sits within the context of many efforts to try to continue to tell a full history of this storied institution. And so we knew that one of the most important things going forward was to try to develop a process that would engage as many people as possible while also allowing us to seek the important information on feasibility and security and cost that would be necessary. So we started with the charge from the Board of Governors given to us in 2018, and that was to provide a plan for lawful and lasting path, which we believe means that it fits within the current law. So to provide a plan that protects public safety, preserves the monument and its history, and this is so important, allows the university to focus on its core mission of education, research, economic stimulation, in creating the next generation of leaders. And then we were asked to present to the Board of Governors a plan for the monument's preservation, disposition, and preservation. We were given an extension, because we were still trying to get critical information, and that plan is due to them today. So here we are. We also were very mindful of another set of resolutions. These were resolutions taken by the Board of Trustees and passed by them in 2015, when we were in the process of renaming Saunders Hall to Carolina Hall and had talked about the best way to develop historical context. But this was a really important aspect of that plan, and I want to mention it, because I think it is really important and something we're quite committed to. But that was to curate the UNC campus and to teach the UNC's full history. We were tasked to create historical markers for McCorkle Place and Saunders Hall, and those are well underway. We were asked to evaluate current information on our buildings, monuments, memorials, and historic landscapes. You'll remember, I commissioned the History Task Force. They have been hard at work on this. And Jim LaLoudis presented on a number of these things at our 225th University Day presentation. So many of these things are well underway. They're not all public yet, but they certainly will become that. Most importantly today is they also asked us to study the feasibility, because they really expected us to create a public place where we could house a permanent collection of UNC's history. And the dream was even bigger, that we could use this to educate and train, perhaps exploring options for online orientation programs or courses. And in fact, even in Arts and Sciences conversations have been underway for a long time about how to tell our history. And in fact, there are already courses that are being taught on that on campus. So that's very important to us, is to stay consistent with this resolution. So as we developed the plan, we had to develop one that we believed would be lawful and lasting. We wanted to sit within, we needed to be responsive directly to the Board of Governors' charge. We wanted to be consistent with the resolutions. And then we began the collection and the analysis of feedback. Now, it's not that we hadn't been hearing for a long time from people, but we wanted to get this in a much more structured way, because we all know that not everybody writes to you, yet people have many opinions on what should be done. So we had a whole series of processes, I'll mention in a minute, to do that. We wanted to deal with public safety and also be able to return to our mission. And as I said, our next steps will be to submit to the Board of Governors and then wait for their action and move forward at that point. Now, I won't go into details about the input, but there are many of them that will be available online. We took a different perspective this time, though. Rather than saying, "We're going to tell people how to give us feedback," we went directly to the Faculty Executive Council. We went to the Staff Association. We went to the students, and they were spectacular. We said, "You work with your community. You ask people what's most important to you, and then you determine how best to give us that feedback." And I was really, I was just really admiring of the way that happened. One of our board members, Dr. Caudill, actually led workshops on how to develop a collaborative process, meeting with faculty and students. A number of us attended those meetings and were really able to hear what people had to say, what their ideas were. So that came to us in so many different ways. It also came from our employee forum. Many of our local governments and businesses have sent us information, and we've also received more than 5,000 responses from the public. The provost read every single one. I've read a pretty darn good number of them, and I think that was very important to us. And many members of the board have read a number of those. So we were getting a lot of input. We also needed to evaluate sites, and we eventually came down to 20 sites that we felt needed to have further evaluation. And that did include putting the monument back in its original place, putting it in other outside areas, in different locations across campus. And we did also look at a few ideas about where it could go off-campus. Let's see, I don't know how to get out of that. As I said, these need to align with the BOT and BOG's resolutions. And so not all of them have turned out to be viable, but we did a lot of work on them. Public safety was one of our, is our strongest criteria. And I'll talk more about that in the end, because we received very good and important feedback on how important that is to having us return to our mission. Our mission is to be an open place where people can be active and study and do all their work in a safe way. We also looked at structural feasibility. Could buildings even handle this? Could, you know, what would that be? We looked at that community input, and of course, we also evaluated very strongly costs and feasibility. I'm going to start with a brief summary of public safety. This was very important to us, and we brought together a very strong panel of national security consultants, and that's all will be available in the report. And they spent a number of weeks considering all aspects of our campus and universities in general, and what it means for us as we try to go forward with developing this plan. They considered the campus climate, and not just our climate, the environment in campuses in general. They looked at our police force, our relationships with the police forces and others in the region, our capabilities, how the laws play in. And they had a number of important findings for us. I'm just going to mention a couple of them here, but they've been very critical to our thinking in every way. I want to start by saying, our police force, UNC police force, is very effective on a day-to-day basis. We have a safe campus. We manage big events, including 30,000 people on Franklin Street, together with strong community policing. So those things are very important. But they talked a lot about the new challenges, challenges that also face a university that has undergoing protest. And those are very different, and they made key recommendations that will require more and different resources, and we certainly will be looking into that. They recommended very strongly that the solution will require us putting the artifacts, that's when we're talking about the bronze statue and the commemorative tablets, in a single-purpose building. It was very clear, public safety alone would make it impossible to return it to its base or to any outdoor location on our campus. And that, I think, was very important. That guided a lot of our thought. They were very strong about a single-purpose building. That also, for us, eliminates Wilston Library that many people had originally selected. They had a series of recommendations about the best way to construct a structure that would be safe and accessible, and they included creating a new freestanding building that would have high-tech security and a buffer zone around the perimeter that could be adequately secure, but would also ensure safe public access, because that's really important. You want people to be able to come to whatever you decide you're going to put together. We did also a very thorough cost analysis. And by the way, the people that are in charge of these analyses are here, sitting in the audience, and they'd be, if the board has questions, they'll be quite happy to answer them. The cost analysis is also in, will be in the public report. It is specific to each of the sites we can continue, we considered, because of course, they all have different capabilities, they all have different needs. We looked at also one-time costs, if we were doing construction or renovation, and we also needed to calculate recurring expenditures in the development of programming and security. So this was very important, and Jonathan Pruitt would be glad to answer questions if needed. We also knew that there were unique security issues for each site, and we got a lot of information about that that we could consider. We assumed programming costs would be relatively the same, because you'll see, we're suggesting a history and education center. So if we are programming that, that needs to be programmed anyplace that we would put it. There are less information directly about what that would cost, but we have many centers on campus that we could use for those sorts of calculations. But just to reiterate, any cost that we put forward came from actual costs of projects we have recently committed, completed. So this is, this, I think, these data are very robust, although every year you go out from a project, prices could change somewhat. We also did a very thorough legal analysis, and I'm going to call forward Mark Merritt in a moment to give more detail on this. But in general, we were looking at the applicable state laws. We needed to consider things like zoning regulations, depending on any sites we considered. We needed to understand the liability concerns. And as a university, we also needed to make sure that whatever we did would allow us to continue to comply with freedom of speech, very important on a university campus. So you'll hear some more about that in a moment. So what we developed was, what we are recommending is a four-point plan, four parts, and I'm interrelated, and I'm going to go through those with you in a moment. The first is dealing directly with the disposition and preservation of the artifacts. The second one looks at the continuation and expansion of the historical contextualization on our campus. The third is an establishment of a university history and education center. And the fourth is the creation of McCorkle Place Gateway. And we think all four of these are vital to our success of this plan, and they all fit together very well. So we begin with the preservation and disposition of the statue and the commemorative tablets. And I'm going to bring Mark forward to talk about this, and then about certain legal issues that we needed to consider. But I'm going to begin by saying, we did look primarily at on-campus sites. We did look at some off-campus locations, and we didn't do them as thoroughly. We don't own those sites, but those were important to us. Based on public safety, considering public safety alone, it is our preference to move to an off-campus location, but it is not possible within the current law. And in fact, even talking to the North Carolina Museum of History about this, they said, "We can't take that unless they're in the current legal situation or without permission from the Historical Commission." And they suggested all of that would limit, they wouldn't be able to be a part of that, and then it would cost $2 million if we were able to do that. So we have a letter to that effect in these materials. We also looked at detail, especially using that public safety report, at aspects of new construction, on-campus location, which we believe would be the best legal option, and also allow us to really bring to life other aspects of the plan. So I'm going to ask Mark Merritt to talk a little bit about the legal situation as we go forward, because this was really important in legal and safety in our consideration. Mark?
What I'm here to talk about is how we fulfill the Board of Governors' charge that the plan we put forward be one that is lawful. The statute that governs the relocation of the monument is North Carolina General Statute That statute allows the North Carolina Historical Commission to approve the relocation of the monument under certain conditions that are set forth in that law. The monument qualifies under and is governed by 100-2.1 because it's an object of remembrance, as that term is defined in the statute. An object of remembrance is defined as a monument, memorial, plaque, statue, marker, or display of a permanent character that commemorates an event, person, or military service that is part of North Carolina's history. The monument qualifies as an object of remembrance under that very broad definition. There are two circumstances where the law allows the monument to be relocated, and both apply here. The first circumstance where relocation can be allowed is when appropriate measures are required by a state or a political subdivision to preserve the object. The second is when relocation is necessary for construction, renovation, or reconfiguration of buildings, open spaces, parking, or transportation projects. What we will propose today satisfies both of those requirements. Let's begin with preservation. The law allows relocation of the monument when it's necessary to preserve the object. We know from recent experience, as reinforced by the report of our security consultants, that preserving the monument in its historical location in McCorkle Place is simply not feasible. We believe that, under the law, appropriate measures can be taken to preserve the monument, and that the plan we're discussing today is such an appropriate measure. The second basis that allows relocation is the one that says, "When necessary for construction, renovation, or reconfiguration of buildings, open spaces, parking, or transportation projects." It is the intent of the university, working with the Board of Trustees, to renovate and reconfigure McCorkle Place to provide, to provide a gateway to the university that gives a more complete picture of its history. Thus, both justifications for relocation under North Carolina General Statute 100-2.1 are satisfied. But the statute goes on to put limitations on what the Historical Commission can approve. It provides that an object of remembrance can be relocated to a site of similar prominence, honor, visibility, availability, and access that are within the boundaries of the jurisdiction from which it was relocated. Let's begin with the first part, similar prominence, honor, visibility, availability, and access. Similar means it shares common attributes. We're proposing a relocation site within the university that we believe shares attributes with the site on McCorkle Place. It would be a place that is accessible by our community. It would be in an indoor location where the monument could be preserved and where it could be displayed and contextualized. It would be in an area that is really dedicated to education, and education is our mission, and we believe will afford the monument the kind of prominence, honor, visibility, availability, and access that the law contemplates. The other limitation in the language I just read is within the boundaries of the jurisdiction from which it was relocated. I don't think there can be any dispute that if we leave the monument within the town of Chapel Hill and within Orange County, that it remains within the boundaries of the jurisdiction from which it was relocated. The other limitation that's meaningful here is that the law prohibits the university from relocating to a monument into a museum, a mausoleum, or a cemetery if it's not originally located in one of those areas. And so the law effectively precludes moving it to a museum, or to a cemetery, or to a The other issue that's important from a legal standpoint is, who has the authority to ask the Historical Commission to relocate the monument? The statute says that that kind of request with respect to preservation can be made by the state or a political subdivision. Under the laws that create the university, the so-called body, corporate, and politic that is the legal entity of the university is placed at the level of the Board of Governors and the university's system. That is why it's important for us to take forward the information we're presenting today to the Board of Governors to make sure that we have the appropriate authority to move forward with what we're proposing. It's also important that we're talking about an indoor location for really two very related reasons. One is, the law requires that if we relocate, we do it to preserve the monument. Our security report has made pretty clear, as well as our own experience, that an outdoor location is inconsistent with preservation of the monument. The other very important aspect of an indoor location is that it promotes campus safety. New construction on an appropriately configured site is something that our security consultants have highly recommended as a way to make sure that we're fulfilling our duty to keep the campus safe. So as you go through the law, as you go through the resolution of the Board of Governors, as you go through the resolution of our Board of Trustees, we believe that an on-campus, indoor location, as will be described, is an appropriate measure to preserve the monument and completely consistent with the governing of all. And Chancellor, Chairman, if you have no further questions, that would complete my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Don't take my notes. So I just, as I move forward, I just want to then reiterate, I think that was really helpful, that we looked at all of these things. And as you heard, based on our own, all we learned, our own preference for taking the safest, of the safest option that would preserve the statue and allow for contextualization and public access would be to relocate the statue and tablets to a secure off-campus location, such as, but not limited, to the Carolina Museum of History. But we realized that relocation to an off-campus location such as that does not comply with current law. Our public safety concerns make it important for us to continue those discussions, but we're going to move forward very actively in developing and seeking approval for our on-campus center, which we think is something that the board and the administration are putting forward today. So our recommendation is to create, with new construction, a new site on the Odom Village site on campus that would allow us to build a history and education center. So I want you to just take a second to look at this map while I try to figure out what I just did with my notes here. Got ahead of myself. Now, this, this just gives you a location of where this is. And at the Odom site, we have some structures that are currently under, they're being demolished. And so this is a site that's available to us. It's also important to say that this is a site as part of our near-term planning for future growth of the campus. It's part of main campus, but it has a very different, you know, it's got a place that you can have parking, and you can have access, and you can build exactly the type of new construction that we have been very, very clearly told is in the best way to do this. It aligns, as you heard, with the resolutions, both of the Board of Governor and the Board of Trustee resolution, which has been the dream to build a center that would allow us to do this for a long time. And we believe very strongly that it meets the security panel criteria. To do this carries costs, you know, roughly, cost of about 5, 5.3 million is what we calculate to actually build the structure. It would be a long-term structure. It would be carrying with it the types of technology, a teaching classroom, places where exhibits could come back and forth as we develop our training programs, potentially having shuttles to link it to the rest of campus, but make it a truly strong, interactive center that tells our full history of this university, from before settlement to its emergence this day as one of the leading public state research universities in America. It would be a freestanding building in a campus growth area with new construction, buffers, state-of-the-art security, and top-line programming accessible to the public. So it just gives you an idea where it sits. There's Keenan Flagler there, the parking deck. There is green space around it right now. As I said, it's subject, those buildings are being demolished that are all around that site. So we feel like this is a, this is a good area for us, and it also gives us capacity and opportunity going forward. Our second point was to continue and expand the historical contextualization of campus. And this is part of that larger, important aspect of our History Task Force and the resolutions of the Board of Trustees. I talked about that briefly. The work has been underway. If you've never gone to Carolina Hall and looked at that, the materials that are there, I really urge you to go there. It was an excellent beginning to our goal to contextualize the history. We are well underway at developing the markers and other digital materials to really contextualize McCorkle Place. And very importantly, I wanted to tell you that this spring, we will move to continue that restoration of the unsung founders' monument. And that is very important. That's been important to our community, and it's important to the board and to the university. So that work, we imagine, will continue, and in fact, truly will be able to go faster, because we've been spending a lot of time dealing particularly with the monument, when we really want to be working very deeply on the full contextualization, those courses, and other materials that we can present. This is also, I really want to say, has really been a very strong effort that has been getting lots of input from our faculty, who have been the majority, the people leading that contextualization and bringing in students and others. So this is important work to us. Center for History and Education. So clearly, that's our proposal, is what we will be doing, is building out this Center for History and Education. We've already done some drawings with designers. None of this is fully, you know, this hasn't been completely designed. You have a lot of work with the site selection and things like that. But we think, and with a relatively small size and that sort of expense, we can educate with accurate and reliable information. We can facilitate work with departments and divisions. I've already had conversations with a number of faculty about this, that could use this center educationally. We would imagine it to have many digital materials to link back to collections that we have across the institution, but also be a place that the public can come we have across the institution, but also be a place that the public can come and learn about really the birth, the growth, and the existence of America's first public university. And that covers all the history of America, and that's what we would want to see, a fuller, honest history of the university and a living educational and training center. And then we think this is extremely important. Many people have talked about this. We believe that we need to create a McCorkle Place gateway. This is not as fully developed, but we have very strong ideas about it, and we'll get lots of feedback on it. But this should be a commemorative place. It should be, it's sort of standing here looking back at campus from where that spot would be. And that would be a place that we really emphasize in a very specific way, the history values and contributions to society of this university, the history of that site, and celebrate many people who have been important in the development of this university. And we would have plaques there and an honorific space to celebrate aspects of our history. So this is a pretty brief summary of what is our four-point plan that we would like to be presenting to the Board of Governors. The Board will, Board of Trustees will do their ultimate vote, but this would be the plan that the Board of Trustees and I, or the university, would be presenting. It's attainable within the law. It aligns with the BOT resolutions, and we believe it meets our Security Panel recommendations. So what I think we'd like to do right now is pass out the report to the people in the room. So we're going to pass it out to people. As I said, once after approvals take place, it will also be available online. So we'll take a minute to do that, and then I'm going to turn it back to Chair Cochran.
Does everyone who wants a copy have a copy?
They're tag teaming.
I was just reminded that it's already been posted on the campus website. There's a separate set of appendices that are, will be available either online, or if you have to have a paper copy, I suspect we can find some. We don't have any, okay. Since we're still in open session, and you didn't have the benefit of a set of remarks this morning about four very special trustees who made extraordinary efforts to assist Carol and her team in the development of these recommendations, the appendices, in full concert with the Security Panel's recommendations. Let me repeat again that former Chair and current trustee, Dr. Cottle, current Vice Chair of the Board, trustee Duckett, current Secretary of the Board, trustee Rumbles, and current trustee, trustee Brown, volunteered to represent the trustees alongside Carol and her team as these things were being developed. And you would not believe the effort that went into that. It was comprehensive, and we are very proud of their assistance, and we're very proud of the work product. So with that, I would ask Dr. Cottle to make a few summary remarks about his thoughts about this set of recommendations.
Thank you, Chairman Cochran. This is my eighth year on the Board. This is one of the most difficult and complicated matters that has come before our Board in my eight years. I want to thank Carol, Chancellor, for all the hard work and time that you've put into this over the last several months. Your senior administration team, you guys have, you have day jobs, but you sure got those done, but you also had to take care of this, and that was awfully important to us to thank you. To Board members, thank you for all your time and energy on this as well. And to our faculty and employees and students, the input that you gave, community, we asked for community input, and citizens of North Carolina, they own this university, and they gave us their thoughts. And so all of that was awfully important. I want to thank the Board of Governors. We have two with us today, Phil Byers and Bob Rucho. The charge that you gave us was a very clear directional charge, and it was very helpful as we went through the deliberations to arrive at the plan, so thank you very much for that. And the, just the overall thoughtfulness and thoroughness, the hard work that people put into this was incredible. The number of hours, the countless conversations, the research, the data gathering, and then the willingness to be flexible, because we, flexibility was absolutely critical to arrive at the plan that Carol articulated. We've made it clear in the report that the preference would be to take the artifacts off-campus and relocate off-campus. But we have a law, and the law prevents that, and we are obligated to follow the law. We all take an oath to do that. The charge was to develop a lawful plan for the disposition and the preservation of the artifacts. And this plan does that. And we brought forth, built, constructed a security panel, brought forth experts who are incredibly knowledgeable in this space, and they brought back some recommendations on safety and security that were incredibly important. Safety is a prime directive of this university. We've got to have a safe environment for our students and for their guests and so forth on our, and faculty on our campus. And so that was awfully important in guiding this. It was very clear, we needed a single-purpose building to house the artifacts. And we also, I also want to make the point that this is consistent with the resolutions that we passed in 2015, and that was awfully important as well, because there's a long-term aspect to those resolutions in how we go forward in teaching and telling the history of our university and so forth. So I endorse the plan. I think it's a good plan. I think Odom Village provides us with the opportunity to build a single-purpose building with the security features in it that we need. We can teach. We are a teaching and research university. We can teach. We can research in that facility. We can also exhibit our history in that building, and it allows us to do the things that we're here to do as a teach, a teaching and research university. So Chair, those are my comments.
Dr. Cottle, thank you very much, and thank you again for that incredible effort alongside the Chancellor and her senior team. Since we're still in open session, I wonder if any other trustees would like to make a comment?
I would, Mr. Chair.
Members of this Board and the Chancellor have worked hard to do exactly what the Board of Governors has charged us to do. I commend everybody for their hard work. I feel compelled, however, to argue that the charge was too narrow. The Board of Governors asked this Board of Trustees to conceive, quote, "a lawful and lasting path that protects public safety, preserves the monument in history, and allows the university to focus on its core mission of education, research, economic stimulation, and creating the next generation of leaders," close quote. It did not ask us to conceive a strategy that takes into account the moral and ethical issues that so many of us think about in regard to the Confederate monument. It is those issues that I want to address. The monument was erected more than 100 years ago, in 1913, during a period in which white racists were reassuring, reasserting their domination over black people and using various means, such as the erection of statues like Silent Sam, to promote white supremacy. While the stated objective of the monument is to honor the memories of Carolina students who left school to fight in the war, we cannot, at least I cannot, ignore what the war was fought over: slavery. This monument is a reminder that black people were owned by white people as property and that the institution of slavery was enforced by unconscionable brutality for hundreds of years. Many men and women were born into slavery and spent their entire lives in this brutal exploitative system. If they were women, they may have been raped repeatedly and without recourse for their master's pleasure or even their master's friend's pleasure, and to produce more slaves to work for their masters. This is not a time that African-Americans remember fondly. And though many people don't want to accept it, this exceedingly long period of slavery, followed by another 100 years of enforced segregation, accounts for some of the disparities in health and wealth that exist between black people and white people today. This reality that so many whites are born into circumstances of advantage while so many blacks are born into disadvantage is a source of anger that seethes within the, within many African-Americans. The presence of monuments like Silent Sam make it more difficult for some people to contain anger that is always present. Racial reconciliation is one of my biggest priorities. I have been asking African-American students what they think of a plan to move the statue to an indoor facility on the edge of campus, and many of them have said that they think it's a reasonable solution. The text messages, text messages are good because they're succinct. I've been receiving messages such as "might be the best thing," or "I could be for that." Their thoughts matter a great deal to me. In addition, I'm aware of legislation that was introduced in both the State Senate and State House in May, supported by African-American legislators, entitled "An Act to Authorize the Chancellor of the University of North Carolina to Move a Certain Monument on the Campus to a Permanent Indoor Location for Public Viewing." The fact that African-American legislators would support a plan like the one we are considering today gives me comfort in supporting it. As I stated already, I commend this Board for doing the hard work to come up with the best proposal that fits within the Board of Governors' charge to us. I will support this proposal, but in recognition of the unmitigated evil of slavery and acknowledging the feelings of loss that exist even today within so many African-Americans who are still disadvantaged and disenfranchised, I believe this statement accompanying my vote is necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think you said that very well, Bill. But, but just on a different perspective, I personally don't believe that this statue has, has any place to be on this campus. And while I do believe full-heartedly that this is the best on-campus location that the university leadership and the Board were able to come up with, I still don't think it meets the needs of students. And while I full-heartedly again support the continuation and expansion of contextualization on-campus, I simply can't support putting a Confederate monument back on campus anywhere.
Mr. Chairman and fellow trustees, I want to thank the Board of Governors for the faith placed in us to bring forward a recommendation we think is best for our campus. I also want to thank the Chancellor, the leadership team, the Security Panel, and the individuals who took the time to share their thoughts about the monument. Much work has been done to bring together and gather many different viewpoints from around our state and on our campus, and many have worked late to help us navigate through this challenging and sensitive decision. I want to extend a thank you to all the trustees for listening and thoughtful consideration as we approach today's recommendation. It is in times like these that I must rely on mission and values to guide us. Lux Libertas, light and liberty. We are at a fork in the road, and we must lead based on what will provide safety and move us forward in today's world. I support this plan and emphasize my preference to relocate the artifacts to a secure off-campus location. I do not condone breaking the law, thus given the constraints of the current law. Our Board of Trustees Resolution Number One and the Board of Governors' August 2018 Resolution, I support this recommendation for the relocation of the artifacts to the new University History and Education Center on the main campus property known as Odom Village. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee.
I guess I've got a few thank you, Chairman Cochran. I just want to do a shout-out to this Board first, and just, and just thank everybody. Everybody came at it with, they were thoughtful. I think most everybody put aside their ideological and political, maybe personal views, to put on their fiduciary hats to think about what is best for the University of North Carolina going forward. So I want to thank the trustees. We actually did spend a lot of time debating and discussing what to do. Now I want to turn my comments to Chancellor Foltz and Provost Bluen, also their incredible team, and I'm actually going to mention just a few of their names. Mark Merritt, Felicia Washington, Clayton Summers, Amy Hertel, Jonathan Pruitt, Joel Kern, David Ruth, and oh, so many others who have worked late nights and weekends. They have sacrificed family time, much less their daily jobs and responsibilities, to research, to participate in countless meetings, to conduct listening sessions, to read reams and reams of data, as well as write and rewrite and edit untold number of drafts. I also want the university community to know how hard Chancellor Foltz and Provost Bluen fought during this process to make sure your voices at the university and the community were heard, your ideas, your feelings, and your opinions. They fought hard to make sure that the Board of Trustees not only heard, but understood what you had to say. So I want to also say this, you are smart, you're capable, and you're committed. That's a given. But it is your love for this university that has made such a huge difference in this process. So I want to thank you and bless you for everything, and your staff for everything that you've done to contribute to this process. And having said all this, I do want you to know that, like many of you here, it is my personal preference that this artifact get moved off-campus for security reasons. But it is, it is not lawful, and I too obey the law, and my commitment as a trustee to obey the law. And I think that this on-campus proposal to move it to Odom Village is a good, lasting, and workable solution, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Next, Chair Duckett.
I'm going to be very brief. There are so many people to thank that have spent their heart and soul on this. I want to say that in the light of all this, we just lost, in my opinion, the greatest living American, President Bush. He's my hero, but he worked his entire life to bring people together, not apart. Something that's not my line, and we've seen it in places before, but if you cannot change your mind, you cannot change. Lastly, one more line from somebody, when somebody said, "This place is not what it used to be," they're right. It's better than it's ever been in the history of this university, and I'm proud of this university, and I'm proud to give a lot of my adult life and time to this place. It's worth it. And lastly, I want to thank you, Chancellor, for all your efforts.
Any further questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to recommend the plan that we have discussed this morning to the Board of Governors.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept and endorse the Chancellor's recommendation and to submit the recommendation to the UNC Board of Governors in response to the resolution dated August 28, 2018. 28th, 2018.
Do we have a second? Second, any further discussion on the motion? If not, given the fact that we may have some yeses and some nos, I'm going to ask that we have a show of hands, for all those who are in favor, please raise your hand. Same signification for those who may be voting no. We have two. You got, okay, the motion passes, and is it, sorry?
We will do a brief media availability.
Okay, and the Chancellor's just informed me that we will do a brief media availability, I'm not sure what room, but we'll figure that out when we talk to the communications staff. If any of you want to participate, please check with someone on our communications team, and they will direct you to the appropriate spot. Is there any further business to come before the Board this morning? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.